Okay.
And then we're ready.
Okay, good morning. So San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of February eighth twenty twenty-three will please come to order. Please rise and join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Janet, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Chai Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Saranakwan is absent, I don't see him online at the moment. And staff is presented by Steve Monowitz and Tim Fox and Angela Montes as support. Thank you.
Okay, and so we have Commissioner Saranakwan is still not here, okay?
Yeah, not yet.
So we move on to oral communications. That's next on the agenda. So that will allow the public to speak on any matter that's not on today's agenda. Janet, would you please explain the process to the public?
Yes, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments during the general public comment period. And for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When hear your name called, I will go ahead and prompt you and you may begin speaking and you will have five minutes. And as of now, I do not see any hands raised for items not on the agenda, Chair.
Okay. So seeing none. Let's close the oral communications unless any of the commissioners see any reason to wait. So shall we close the oral communications?
Yes.
Educations are closed. So we move on to our consent agenda. On consent agenda, we have four items today. Would any of the commissioners like to pull any items of the consent agenda? I look. I looked at the minutes and the minutes are I would like to shell those till the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot to check those to see if they've been changed, were they, were they not updated?
No, I don't see, the draft still has not been updated. So I would like to move those till the next meeting. But I'm okay with the other three. Do I have a motion to approve the other three?
So move.
Second.
Second. Okay. Can we have the roll call, Janet?
Chair, Commissioner Ketchum?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Commissioner Saranakwan is absent. Commissioner Hanson? Oh, Chai Gupta?
Yes.
Thank you, your motion passes.
I.
Did I get you?
No, it's okay.
Okay, so, so four two.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. So the consent agenda passes, we move on to the regular agenda. Janet, could you please read that for the record?
Sure. Regular agenda item, which is item number five. Owner applicant Canyon Vista Partners LLC. File number PLN two zero two two dash zero zero one three six. Location two oh six Sequoia Avenue and Sequoia Track. And we have Olivia Boo or Summer Burleson giving this presentation today.
Okay. So who will be presenting?
Hi, it's Olivia, I'll be presenting, I'm, I'm trying to.
Thank you, thank you, please go ahead.
I'm trying to straighten out my, I'm having a little bit problems trying to adjust here. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm having trouble, I was trying to get the index on the left column away and it's not working for me right now. But I'm gonna go ahead, my Olivia Boo presenting, doing the presentation for this project. Good morning Commissioners, County Staff and County Council.
Good morning.
So this project is a on the agenda for a major consideration of a major subdivision to construct a new four-story twenty-three unit condominium with onsite parking, the parcel size is eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty-one square feet. There is grading proposed of three hundred eighty-five cubic yards for a foundation, building a foundation, and there is a removal of three trees. I'll go through the project location and then the project compliance and the environmental review. So the project is major subdivision component again for the new four-story twenty-three unit condominium development. Some key items are three units are affordable, very low income units, which is under the inclusionary ordinance. Eight units are proposed under state density bonus law. Parking is for thirty-three ground level parking spaces, which also includes biker lockers. Cubic yards of three hundred eighty-five cubic yards of grading and again tree removal. This is the general location of the project off of, in the Sequoia Track off of Woodside Road. This is a Google Maps view located between Woodside Road and Hall Avenue. There is an existing single-family residence that's on the project, on the property. This is another view, street view. Another street view, it's located at the intersection. This is us overall site plan. Level one, as mentioned, is the parking, onsite parking with some storage and bike storage area. This is level two, there is a difference in terms of the units, so the one-bedroom units are in the tan color, the darker tan color rather, and then the other units which are two-bedroom, two-bath are in the beige color. This is level three with one unit being the one-bedroom. The remainder are the two-bedroom, two-bath. And this is the fourth level. And these, the next few slides are of the elevations, proposed elevations. There's also a landscape plan that is being proposed, which will assist with the replanting of three trees that are requested to be removed. And the replacement will be more than the ordinance requires a ratio of a one-to-one. And there will be more replacement, it's going to be greater than the one-to-one ratio. This is another drawing for the proposed landscape plan. And this is a detail of what is being proposed. In terms of the history of the project, there was a mitigated negative declaration that was processed in January seventh to the twenty-seventh. When the project was proposed for a general plan amendment and rezone. And then in May, the Board of Supervisors approved that general climate amendment and rezone. This formal application was received in April, deemed complete in November, and then to today's public hearing. So to go through the regulations, it complies with the R three S three, the current zoning for the development standards. There are, as part of the state density, state density that was implemented. There are concessions, which I'll also elaborate later in terms of setbacks and height and lot coverage, so those were, those are allowed under the state density bonus to to exceed what is normally allowed for this specific zoning district. For other areas of project compliance, the project combines with subdivision regulations, parking. Implemented two areas again are the county inclusionary ordinance, which specifically allows twenty percent of the units to be restricted for low income. The state density bonus law. For general plan, the project complies with soil resources, visual quality, land use, water supply, wastewater, transportation and housing element. Also, in-lu park fees apply, and as mentioned, the tree removal and replanting. The projects for a project conditioning. For the density bonus, the project is allowed. There's a list that was, that is required by state mandates of options for state density bonus. And the ones, the concessions that apply to this project are again the reduced setbacks, the allowable maximum lot coverage and the building height. The building height requirement is outright is three stories, thirty-six foot high. And it's allowed to be four stories at fifty-four foot height. In terms of environmental review, again, as mentioned, the project went through in two thousand twenty-one mitigated negative declaration associated with development of the project under the rezoning. When the rezoning was presented for before the planning commission and board supervisors to accommodate fifteen residential units. Staff reviewed the increase in residential units of, to the proposed, current proposal of twenty-three units and determined that the adopted mitigated negative declaration adequately analyzed the potential impacts of the project before you today. And an addendum was discussed in the staff report. And the mitigation measures that were discussed in that negative declaration are retained for this project. The further on the environmental review, the project is, remains subject to the Bay Area Quality and Management District in terms of temporary exposures to pollutants and sensitive receptors that they are less than significant levels. And also with greenhouse gases and screening criteria for multifamily residential condominium development. The project is, continues to be required to be in compliance with the California Building Code in effect and has conditional approvals for the Fair Oak Sewer Maintenance District and the California Water Service Bear Gulch. And the project remains below the threshold to require a traffic impact study. Staff recommends approval of the major subdivision with, with a specific conditions that are noted in condition, in attachment eight A. That's the end of the presentation, if there are any questions that I can answer.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Boo. Do commissioners have question for, for our presenter?
I, I do.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you. So with the density bonus, so they're getting eight, they've been able to add eight additional units, right?
Correct.
And now we previously approved for the rezoning was a three-story fifteen units, correct?
Correct.
So now we're adding that extra floor with the eight additional units because of the density bonus.
Correct.
So, and there's the three affordable units which apply to the, to the first fifteen units. Is that how I read it?
Correct, under the affordable inclusionary.
Yeah, now, what about the additional eight? They don't have to provide anything for more.
My understanding is these were based on the original of the fifteen units.
Because I was under the impression that whenever you get a density bonus, basically you get it because you have to provide more affordable housing. But it seems like this is not the case for this one. Or am I just reading this wrong? Can someone explain?
If, if I may speak.
Yes.
As part of staff, height, Summer Burleson, planner with San Mateo County Planning and Building. Regarding state density bonus, so the affordable units that are required for a project, a housing project, that's also taking advantage of state density bonus like this, the affordable units are based off of the the base zoning and the density that's allowed under the base zoning, which is the fifteen units. And then how the state density bonus law works is that if you if your base project, the fifteen units in this case has, depending on how many affordable units is being provided in that base project, it equates to how much additional density bonus units you're allowed, but those additional density bonus units are not subject to any requirements for affordability.
Okay, that's my question for now, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson? You have any questions?
Yes. Excuse me. Since we're going the ways of urbanization, urbanization. And this could be a very densely urbanized corridor. And most of Woodside Road is not under our jurisdiction. What is, do we know of any plans for traffic? How, how we're going to manage traffic is, is this cited for major improvements? Or is, are, all, all, excuse me. Is it all that we know is what we currently have is what we get? I'm just, I'm just basically ignorant of what's happening on Woodside Road.
Off the, off the top of my head, I don't believe, I don't know of any other projects that are under, like a larger scope development, similar, similar scope development.
Okay, so.
I also am, separately have some knowledge just that Caltrans is working on at least one project along Woodside Road that is to, I don't know exactly where they're at in the process, it's been a while since I've checked in with them on it, but they are working on a project to do to make improvements along Woodside Road, including through this, you know, where Sequoia intersects, intersects with Woodside Road that includes some crossing and pedestrian improvements along that corridor.
So there's really no grand plan or vision that we know of?
Outside of what Caltrans may be working on, I don't think so.
Does most of that fall in jurisdictions of Redwood City? Or does, because as a state highway, Caltrans always takes the lead? What's the process of understanding?
It is Caltrans jurisdiction because it is designated highway. I know for the project improvement project they're working on, they're working closely with Redwood City because I believe a majority of the roadway does fall within Redwood City's jurisdiction, although it's Caltrans's, you know, right of way.
I'm just, my worry is the state has, you know, basically mandated urbanization of the suburban areas is making sure that traffic and people can move effectively and enjoyably through a corridor and, you know. You need those things to be planned, as opposed to being reactionary. I understand we're in the transition of where we were from two years ago to where we are today, that a lot of us haven't anticipated, but I think we need to really think about the consequences of these actions, so that was my only question, thank you.
And if I may add, Caltrans is aware of this project and I believe Olivia can confirm, but I believe was sent to project referral as well on, on this specific proposal.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we put things in one at a time and any one of them doesn't get you to the tipping point until you realize you've passed it, you know, and the intent of the state law is to urbanize these corridors. You know, it's going to happen sometime in the, in the future. And transportation corridors are problematic and require a lot of space to do it effectively and enjoyably. And you, we rarely do it enjoyably and half the time effectively. Thank you.
Commissioner Ketchum?
You're muted.
Thank you. To Commissioner Hanson's comments, it's helpful to have comments on the project from agencies like Caltrans, you know, in the at any point in this process so we can understand the communication that's going on and what might be planned. I'd like to understand how the drainage system works, I don't know who could speak to this. I see on the vesting tentative map, the biotreatment areas around the perimeter and connected to storm drain lines and a sump pump in the garage, I'd like to better understand how that, understand the biotreatment, but from there on, I'd like to understand that better.
I'm trying to see if there's, on which plan.
It's on the vesting tentative map. Was in the staff report.
Let me see if I have that. And I also think that that we for the expertise on that, that I think that would also require drainage staff to look at that, to provide more information on that.
While you're looking for the map, can I just ask a different question? With the same requirements for the density bonus, bonus and concessions applied to the R three S three in the mid-coast? I think that's a question for Steve.
Yeah. One that requires me to think for a second. And I, I think the answer is that as it currently stands, our ordinance to implement state density bonus has not been certified by the Coastal Commission as a component of our local coastal program. And I think the position they would take is that you cannot avail yourself of these density credit provisions until the program for implementing them are, is incorporated into your certified local coastal program. So I think the answer is currently no, however, we did previously submit the density bonus ordinance to the Coastal Commission. They wanted us to make certain changes to it and rather than doing so, we decided we would resubmit because there were changes to state density law underway at the state level, so what we had previously adopted was soon going to be out of date, so we need to go back to the Coastal Commission with our new density bonus ordinance and that's part of the long-range work program.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what is, I had no idea, I mean, it's, it's a huge leap to go from twenty-eight foot height limit to whatever, fifty-something and that, you know, I didn't know that was potentially in the offing and I'm sure the community would like to understand and be aware of, you know, what is planned and what might happen. So do we have the, as to the drainage, is that?
Yeah, I was able to find, it was actually, I found it in my slide, let me just share. I believe this is the slide that shows some of the, it's a little bit small.
Yeah, that's what I was speaking of, so the, is there someone here who can?
I, we don't normally have, it would be Public Works Drainage Staff that would best be able to answer and explain the details of that and we don't, I don't believe anyone is present to do that.
Well, my question isn't, doesn't have to be, is that project, my decision, this project doesn't hinge on, this is more for my education, so basically, at some point in the future could, could we have an explanation of, so what's happening here, I understand the, they're not supposed to have any extra water go off-site. And so it looks from this diagram as though the drain pipes empty into these bio-retention areas around the property and then those are piped into the, under the garage and you see that central thing in the garage or the the drain lines go to this rectangular thing, I don't know what that is, and there's a sump pump there, and then there's drain lines that go out towards the street and I I, that's what I would like to understand, so if there's overflow from the bio-retention areas, it goes into this garage piping system and then what happens? That's, I guess that's the part I would like to understand, doesn't need to be today. Thank you.
The applicant will be speaking too, maybe.
The applicant will be speaking too, maybe they can shed some light on that.
Okay, great.
Right.
Just one, one more question then, uh, the, uh, this is curiosity as well. So the in-lube park fees, um, is that a countywide parks fund? And is there any effort to direct those funds to certain locations related to where the funding came from or anything like that?
Sorry, I actually am not, I don't know where, um, specifically they, and they end up. I don't know if Summer can speak to that.
Well, I, I'll start. Um, so I, I think these fees are, um, limited to subdivisions. Um, and so, um, once they are received, they are, do go to Parks account and get programmed. But I'm not sure what the Parks programming methodology is, if there's a relationship between where the funds were collected from and where they're going to invest them. We did a report to the board, I know on the midcoast, uh, parks fees. And I can follow up with Parks to find out how this relates to their, uh, funding program. But at this point, I don't have the details on that.
Okay, thanks. That's awesome.
Okay, um, so I had a couple of questions, um. Uh, are there any? Uh, multi, multi-level, uh, buildings in the neighborhood? There's, uh, I guess this question is for, um, for our presenter.
I know offhand, just in my familiarity with Woodside, I do know that along Woodside, um, I don't know exactly how far that there are. Um, and they're actually quite a bit older, um, other apartment complexes for certain that are along Woodside. That is a very common area, kind of a strip along there, um, to have, um, higher density. Um, and then maybe sometimes, you know, a couple, so yeah, there are existing, um, higher density apartment, um, complexes that have been around for a while along Woodside.
Okay, and, uh, how tall, uh, would you say they are? Like, is this, uh, exceeding the height?
Um, this is, yeah, I would, sorry, I would, um, I think of, again, off the top of my head, I, I think this is like, could, um, easily be taller. Those ones are, again, off to the just off my memory, are definitely at least two stories high, possibly three for the existing older, um, apartment complexes in the area.
Okay, okay. Also, one of the things I, I'm going, uh, like, kind of, my question is coming from kind of an extension of what, um, Commissioner Hanson was talking about the, uh, traffic and, um, safety, basically enjoyment of the corridor there. Even in this pre-application, uh, public workshop, um, that we had, had, uh, they were talking about the safety issue there, uh, about pedestrian crossing, uh, on those intersections. Once this building is, uh, there, uh, so are there any, um, is there any public transportation close to, uh, uh, this construction? That we know?
I have, I personally did not look at the, the public transportation in the area, but I do know, um, again, from being in an area that there is, um, I, I believe there are buses in the area for public transportation. The Woodside Road is.
On the Woodside Road?
Mm-hmm, because there's across the street on, I think it's considered the north side of Woodside Road. Um, there is various, um, retail on that side. So yeah, I do, I do know that there is public transportation. I, I've, I have observed it before.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, so that, that's all I have at this time. And so, uh, is the applicant there? Let's have the applicant, uh, speak. Do we have the applicant who would like to speak at this time?
Olivia, um, would you be able to tell me who the applicant is? Uh, I don't have anybody.
Oh, there should be, um, uh, um, Mr. Grove, Ron Grove, or my, maybe Michael Chilcote?
Perfect. Okay, I'll go ahead and transfer Ron Grove right now. Mr. Grove?
Hello, this is Ron Grove. How are you? Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to thank the staff, um, at this time for such a detailed presentation. And, uh, I'd like to move forward with any questions you have at this time. I also have the architects, um.
Are you have fifteen minutes? Please go ahead.
What's that?
Uh, you have fifteen minutes? Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm here to answer any questions. I think the, the staff detailed, uh, a great presentation and, and kind of put forth everything I could say. I, I do have, um, our architects on, on, on standby as well to answer any questions. And I might be able to help you out a little bit with the drainage, if you like.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Grove, if you'd please, um, respond to Commissioner Ketchum's question about, um, what happens after the storm water flows from the bio retention into that collection, um, basin under the garage?
Yeah, what happens is it goes into the collection and then it dissipates, it's supposed to dissipate in the ground. And what happens when we get a rain like we just had in the past, which is rarely, the tank fills up and it goes through the bio system and it has nowhere to go. So there's a two-inch pipe at the end of that, that, uh, I think it's like a forty-foot long pipe or thirty-foot long pipe. I'm not positive. I don't have the plan in front of me. But what happens if it does meet, uh, the, the top of the pipe and it can't dissipate, it's metered through that pump out to the right of way through a two-inch little pipe. And we did the same thing similar on a project over on West Oakwood with a six, um, six, six-house subdivision I did there with the road. And anybody in the area probably knows the project, they can go by there and see that, uh, it's rarely used and what it is or where it's great. There's, there's, there's no excessive flooding or, or anything like that. And it's all, this is all, this is all designed by the county standards, of course, and it has gone through your plan check.
So the, the part, the rectangular shape under the garage and the sump pump, that's not a large tank. I mean, it's basically, it's just, um, pipes to take the overflow out to the street. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, that's a holding tank. And what happened is that goes through bioswale treatment, it goes through a bioswale into those holding tanks and then dissipates into the ground. And whatever excess is left over, if it can't dissipate into the ground, it's pumped to the street. And generally that doesn't happen unless we have a really crazy rain like we've had in the past. Otherwise, it generally just dissipates.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have any, any other, uh, information that you want to add, uh, Mr. Grove?
No, I do not. But, um, if you have any real detailed questions about the architecture, I, I know you guys were talking about the bonus, the density bonuses and all that stuff. I could, I might be able to add a little to that. Um, this, this project was, this project was granted fifteen, fifteen units. And by, by code now, we have to provide at twenty percent, I believe it's twenty percent low income housing. And what happens with these low income housings is they cost a lot of money to build, but when you sell them as low income, you, you're actually losing a lot of money. So the state came forward and said, in order to get housing in California, um, we're going to tell these developers, we want twenty percent before that to offset the cost of what it's costing. Then we're going to give them these extra bonuses to make sure we get our housing. If, if we didn't get the extra units, we couldn't supply the housing because these, these, these projects are on a very tight budget. Um, they're like a ten-year plan right now and, and, uh, ju- just to start, start breaking even on these things with, with the time it takes to get them through and the, and the fees and the building costs. And so these projects, I think you're going to start seeing them slow down because at this point they're not real cost effective. So the state stepped up and again, and said, okay, if you're going to do these low income, very low income properties, it costs you a few bucks. Here's what you're going to get to offset it. And that's, that's the only way I see you can make these projects work.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ramirez, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I do. So you're saying that, that you will provide twenty percent, um, for affordable housing? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's a mandatory rule now, I believe. Uh, Steve can probably tell you. I, I'm working with a couple of cities, but I think in San Antonio County, it's twenty percent low income. So based, based on that fifteen units, I'd have to provide twenty percent on the fifteen units. For doing so, I'm basically building three, three units and they're actually costing me money. And for doing that and providing the housing to the low income into the county, the state has set up for it and said, here are these bonuses to make, to, to entice me to do it. Otherwise, um, these houses, nothing would be built. You couldn't afford to build them. Uh, I mean, the margins are so thin right now, it's, it's, it, it, they don't make sense. So that's the reason for the state stepping up. They want housing and, and in order to get the housing, they've got to give bonuses where you can get back some of the cash you've put out to give away these low income ones and, and get back your, 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 your capital.
Um, correct. Uh, I mean, you do get that extra, um, floor and eight additional units.
We, I, I agree, but even i- if we did not get that, I would not be building this project. I wouldn't even consider it. I, I, it, it would make zero sense for the housing, to contribute to the housing period. There, I mean, I could stay home and go broke. I don't need to, I don't need to run out and build, uh, build these units and go through five years of, of planning and, and building and, and all these fees to, to, you know.
Okay.
Well, if I could just, um, on the topic of the density, uh, you know, it's more than, um, just a financial consideration. Um, you know, irrespective of, uh, that reality, um, this is the way in which, um, county has an opportunity to achieve our, uh, regional housing allocation, which is broken down by income categories. And, um, you know, the inclusionary housing ordinance and the density bonus is, are really, um, important tools that enable the county to meet the state requirements regarding housing allocations.
Yeah, I, I understand that, uh, Steve, uh, the, the thing that I'm, I'm kind of wrestling with is that, we have twenty-three units and I don't understand why we're not, um, assessing, uh, the low income housing at twenty-three units rather than fifteen, which would be more like four point six units would be more like six, uh, five units. Uh, and I don't know.
I think that, um, perhaps I'm mistaken, Commissioner Ramirez, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but I, it seems to me that, that formula that you're applying would require units, uh, additional units based on the bonus units. And so that's not the traditional way that this has been, um, applied. Um, the number of bonus units is based on the base number of units proposed, not on the cumulative with the bonus units.
So what, what if they were not going to do that fourth floor and they just keep a three and then, uh, what is that?
Well, I, I think what that came to saying is that, um, without three floors of market rate units, the, it, the project doesn't pan out. And so the site would remain undeveloped.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking more in the ways, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to overburden, um, you know, this, uh, particular developer. But I wonder, uh, if that's where like the, the county would have some other way of, um, you know, uh, getting some, uh, incentives to, money incentives to, to actually push that extra.
Well, certainly the county partners with, um, the, the developers to do, um, that sort of thing. Most of the projects that I've been involved in, where the county is contributing significant amounts are a hundred percent affordable housing. And so there's no, uh, you know, um, you know, whether it takes advantage of density bonus is irrelevant to the amount of, uh, affordable housing provided. Because as I say, it's, you know, in most cases, close to a hundred percent affordable. And I think that's when it comes to investing the county monies that's been set aside for, um, affordable housing, I think we get the most bang for the buck with a hundred percent. And where the market can, uh, step in and also contribute, uh, to the affordable housing by including a proportion of the project as affordable. I think that helps us get to where we need to go in terms of meeting the needs. Because when it comes to low income housing, that's the hardest category for the county to fulfill in its housing allocation. And we need all of the help we can get from the market rate development.
Uh, yeah, I, I get it. Um, I don't know, I, I just feel that if we are going to burden the, the community with adding, you know, uh, more height into the area, uh, that, that we could definitely, uh, push to get the maximum amount of, uh, units, um, and that had to be with the county, uh, stepping in, uh, to help increase that number of units. I think it would be, um, a good thing to do. Because at the same time, while I am, you know, very much for, uh, affordable, all affordable housing, uh, projects, I think it's better to disperse all this affordable units across the entire area, not just in one particular area, you know?
Without a doubt, without a doubt. And, um, you, you know, to that end, I think that's where these kind of, um, mix of market rate and affordable helps to achieve that objective.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just saying, you know, I, I maybe we need to, uh, and we may not be able to do anything for this project, but I think, um, it's, I think it's, uh, material for another discussion of how we actually achieve more and spread it more, uh, throughout the, the area.
Agreed. And, uh, you know, let me just say too, that, um, you know, market rate housing is, um, a need as well. And so, um, that's why these projects are beneficial in terms of meeting a variety of needs.
Right, right. Uh, oh, on, on the final question, so what, uh, I don't know if you guys can tell me right now. But so what, what's the, uh, the base salary that we're looking at for, uh, low income and, and, and medium income? Uh, that people would be able to, uh, apply for this?
You know, our, uh, we work very closely with our housing department who keeps careful track of, um, average income levels and then sets the threshold of what can be charged for low income. I, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I have a lot of confidence in our housing department and the process that they use to ensure that these units will be truly affordable.
Um, so when, when this, uh, project is completed and is ready to be applied for affordable, uh, housing, who, who then actually ends up, uh, going through the process or accepting the applications and, and making sure that this, is it the owner or is the county that actually gets involved, uh, who gets involved with that? going through the process or accepting the applications and and making sure that this is it the owner or is the county that actually gets involved, who gets involved with that?
Well.
Go ahead, Mr. Grove, if you want, if you have experience.
Yeah, I've done some in St. Carlos and what has to happen is people qualify for the low income and I'm not sure where it is right now. I think it was at 55,000, I thought was the yearly income and that can be for two people or whatever the case may be. And what they do is they gave me, the St. Carlos gave me a list of like five people to qualify and and a lot of those people were on the list so long, it took it took quite a long time. I mean, we got the building pretty much occupied. The low income was the harder part because a lot of the people fell off the list. It was so old and it was hard to get a hold of the people. So St. Carlos ended up giving me a list of 20 and we 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 hit the first five and then when we didn't get replies, we tried again. Anyway, I have to submit, we they have to be qualified with their taxes and on a yearly basis, I have to meet with with their housing department and and pull, get all the documents from the tenant, supply the the county, in this case, it would be the county instead of the city, with the documents from the renter showing that they haven't exceeded their low income ability. And then they're qualified again for another year. And this goes on in St. Carlos for 50 years. And I'm not real sure here, is it 50 in the county? Yeah, so I'm gonna I'm gonna be married to this project for 50 years or if I'm selling. In that case, somebody else would be married to that project to submit paperwork for 50 years and and make sure that people don't exceed the limits for that unit.
All right.
Hi, this is Olivia Abu, project planner. It was the from what I read in the ordinance of 55 years.
Correct, yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much for your input on this. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Hanson, did you have any question for Mr. Grove?
No questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ketter? Nothing more question? No, okay. So following on about the affordability on these units, are these units going to be for sale or are these rental units?
These units are going to be for sale. So in this case here, the one the one I was speaking of in St. Carlos was a rental unit. So this particular one, these particular are for sale. And they'd be to lower income and I don't know how that's handled. I think with the for sale thing, they they if they fall under a thing where they I'm not sure, but I believe you can, nobody can sell it for 10 years or something. They got to qualify, but maybe Steve or Olivia would know better on that.
Okay, I need the the housing department staff to explain that. And, you know, this line of questioning makes me think that a future study session that includes our housing staff who can explain how this works would be beneficial to the commission. So happy to arrange that in the future. But as I said, I've got a lot of confidence in the process they use in terms of making sure we fulfill the intent here.
Correct, correct, right, right, understood. Yeah, that would be nice. I think commissioners would like to understand that process. Because these will come up more and more as we go along. Okay. I thought this is a good time to bring up, there was a correspondence about concern about some removal of some trees. Which seemed unnecessary according to this person. I do have the correspondence here. Person's name is Elizabeth. Sorry, it's so small. I'm squires.
Correct.
That's right.
That that there was concern whether there was an English walnut tree in the back rear that of whether it truly needs to be removed. Staff did consult with two items with the county arborist. And then in looking at the plans, it turns out that the there was two versions of the arborist report and the older version had been is included on the staff report in the presentation when that was realized, the staff report. I removed the, because there's an updated report, I believe, from from earlier this year. I'm sorry, from last year, I'm sorry. And so anyway, there's a subsequent report that was published. And so the comment was on was derived from the first arborist report version. So in consulting with the county arborist, there is there the comment response that I received back was that it is within the footprint of the construction as well as there is based on the arborist looking at the construction plans that aspect and then that it's going to the construction is is that is expected to further stress add stress to that tree. And it made sense as a result of that, it would make sense to re- propose to remove that.
Okay.
Olivia, I think there was also a comment about one of the trees to remain and whether or not construction would impact that tree. Did are, do you have a response from the arborist on that concern?
Oh, and firstly, I don't, I I saw the response from the comment for the English walnut.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. We also may have some public comments. Is there any?
Hi Chair, this is a public comment for item number five. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. Right now I have two hands raised for this item. First, Chris Kellums, followed by CP. Please go ahead and state your your full name and begin speaking. Chris, Mr. Kellums, go ahead.
Hi, this is Chris Kellums, 207 Sequoia Avenue, right across the street from this planned development. Now I know where the little walnut saplings are coming from. That was always a mystery. Where is the walnut tree? I have, of course, against this from the get go. I was part of the, listened to the hearing for the change in zoning. And of course, that went nowhere. But going from three stories to four stories, I was barely going to have a view of the mountains. And now there will be no view. I was really hoping that Mr. Grove would purchase the property in the flag lot next door and expand his footprint for his proposed, at that time, apartment building. And go that direction to get more units so it would be financially viable for him. Obviously, that didn't work. I I still, you know, wish he would get a hold of that property. That that property, the flag lot, I can't remember the address. There is a sewer line. There's a storm sewer drainage thing in the backyard of that place that I believe comes down the driveway, the extended long driveway to that flag lot and ties into the storm sewer system. When we first bought our property, it was we still had drainage ditches. So that's how long ago. And I see I'm over time, but I am against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I will next call on CP. Please go ahead, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Cynthia Kalea. I live down the block. I was wondering if I might share a few photographs that I took off of Google Maps of the property and the neighborhood in regards to how tall the buildings are proposed. May I share my screen?
Dennis, can you help?
Yes, I'll have to go and remove the timer and we'll just kind of keep that to the side. And that way you can share your screen. Give me one second. Angela. Okay. Go ahead and share your screen at the moment.
Um, it doesn't say that I have any.
On the bottom, you should see a share screen with a green kind of arrow pointing up.
All I have on the controls or is to raise or lower my hand, mute and unmute and leave the.
Go ahead, just one second.
Join this panelist.
There you go. Can you click okay? There. Okay, now go ahead, try it.
You unmuted, no.
There you go.
Thank you.
Perfect.
You see?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the property that is proposed to be the 23 unit condominium. And I just wanted to go through a couple of slides quickly. Here is the one of the apartments that is on Santiago, which if you look at the map that was included with the flyers, that is a high density apartment on Woodside Road, not on into the neighborhood, although so that is at Santiago and Woodside. And that's quite a bit away. Here is Santiago and Woodside, where that apartment is, that apartment complex right there. And here's my Google Map, 1899 Woodside. This is more buildings, 1779 Woodside. It's still a little bit farther from the neighborhood. Here is that lot again. And let's see. Let me split my share and open up another one. Here is Google Maps. There is Woodside Road. That's across the street. And if I turn around and look at scan the neighborhood, this is how far into the neighborhood that 23 unit would be. I live on this street. And I I still think that this is uncharacteristic of our neighborhood. This is the closest apartment, which is only two stories. And I believe it's only a few units. If I look around, there's the lot under construction. It's a very small unit. And the back of this unit can be seen on the next street up if you go down to.
Hi ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time is up. If you can start wrapping it up, that'd be great.
Thank you. Yes, I I do think it's uncharacteristic to build something so dense in our neighborhood and was hoping that the builder would reconsider to make it lower. I know low income is in demand, but I know down on Veterans Boulevard, all of those apartment complexes down in that area had adjusted for many, many low income units. And in this neighborhood, I I think something more appropriate to fitting the character would be best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. I will next call on Terry Matsakis, followed by Christina B. Please accept this invitation and unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Terry Matsakis. I do live on Santiago Avenue and I want to echo CP's concerns that four stories is too much for this area. Sequoia Avenue is mostly two story with just around me, there being three stories and there's like one office building that's three stories in the first level, but it's it's on Woodside Avenue. And it's in the middle of like other office buildings. It's not, you know, I mean, we CP is right, we're talking about moving into the neighborhood and now we're talking about a four story development. Also, I I came late to the meeting, but I understand from discussion elsewhere that there are only 30 parking spots for 23 units, units. If that's correct, I just have to ask, can you please put in, require at least two parking spots per unit? We all know. First of all, this can be a very dense area. Most people who move in are likely to have one or two people staying in them. I've known people that are eight people in a two bedroom. But there needs to be, on the assumption there's going to be two adults per unit, there really needs to be two parking spots per unit. It's kind of hard. I mean, we just, I it's all going to spill into the neighborhood. And there's not necessarily enough street parking to accommodate what we're looking out to, which would be, I guess, 30, 46, 16 extra cars plus visitors. So I feel like that should be a minimum of two cars per. Also, there was a question about whether or not there's buses that run. There are buses, but I don't know that they are on a normal schedule anymore. So that would be something that Sam Trans needs to commit to making sure the buses are back to normal after the pandemic. And then I've got 10 seconds left. My last point would be regardless of whether this goes in or not, there really needs to be one of the pedestrian lights over by Lucia's Pizza where the woman got killed. Without question, it is hard to tell when anyone is crossing the street there and whether or not this goes in, that's something that you guys should really consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your comment. I will next call on Christina B., followed by Mr. John McGurk. Go ahead.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so I live nearby. I was also a part of the rezoning meetings, which went nowhere. I have some major concerns now that we have a preschool on the corner of Woodside Road, right nearby the proposed development and children's safety, getting to and from the preschool. The crosswalk is a major issue that the last person just mentioned. People have died there and now we're going to have more people needing to cross the street, especially if you're not allowing for more cars because you think they won't have cars. Well, then they're going to be walking and crossing the street. The kids, if there's cars overflowed parking in the neighborhood, which I've seen just over on Santa Clara that happening, it's not safe to walk with kids or dogs because drivers can't see you going in and out of the cars that are in the way. There's no parks on this side, public parks on this side of Woodside Road for anyone who moves in. They would also have to cross the street. And just getting on to Woodside Road from Sequoia Avenue is pretty dangerous as it is. Adding 23 families to the mix is going to be horrendous. I don't understand the four story need. It does not fit the neighborhood. I understand the need for more housing. I think townhouses would probably be more appropriate. Not this. And I think it would affect a lot of the character of the neighborhood. And quite frankly, it would be an eyesore. It is way into the neighborhood compared to all the higher buildings that are going in. So I think the height really needs to be to be thought of. And yeah, I'll just end it with I don't think the traffic is being thought of enough. Sequoia is already a pretty busy street and now it's going to be worse. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. I will next call on John McGurk. Please go ahead and unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Okay, my name is John McGurk. I live over on Bearsford Avenue, a block and a half away from this site. And I urge you to deny the major subdivision for a new four story, 23 unit condominium development at 206 Sequoia Avenue in the Sequoia tract. This project, if allowed to go forward as presented, would destroy the surrounding neighborhood. There are no four story multifamily residential buildings in the entirety of the Sequoia tract. However, once the county board of supervisors approved the zoning change from single family to multifamily, the fate of our neighborhood was apparently sealed. The supervisors were led to believe that a zoning change would result in a proposed proposal of up to 15 residential units. As I stated in my spoken comments at that public hearing, to give away a zoning change before a development proposal has even been presented is like buying a pig in the poke. The board of supervisors were deceived. So now before you was an application to build the four story 23 unit condominium on a lot that was originally zoned, single family. Yes, it's a large lot. Yes, we need more housing, but not something this size in this area. A development similar to what A development similar to what was recently approved at 1301 and 1311 Woodside Road is appropriate for this area of the Sequoia tract. Please do not approve this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. And Chair Gupta, I have no other hands raised for this item.
Okay, so since we have no no further no other public speakers, we will close the public comments at this time. Unless commissioners feel otherwise. So, so the public comments are closed. Steve, would you like to comment on any of the comments made at this time?
Certainly. Thank you, Chairperson Gupta. Yes, I understand the community sentiment. We heard many of the similar comments during the zoning update and it's, I know, a difficult proposition to accept the type of change that's being proposed in what's been traditionally single-family residential neighborhood. However, I think all such neighborhoods that are on the border of primary transit corridors have been identified as necessary areas to increase our housing stock. And there, the state has put very significant controls on the ability of local government to say no to such projects. When the planning commission and when the board of supervisors approved the zoning amendment, we established a right for the developer to move forward with the project of this density and the intensity and the density bonus is a, not something that we are able to say we're not going to allow for. It's, it's a right under state law for a developer to propose. In addition, with regard to concerns about parking, we are limited by state law in terms of how much parking we can require for these sorts of projects. And while I certainly recognize the need and desire for transportation improvements and better transit service, I, I think those things are proceeding on a separate track and also under state law would not provide a basis to deny the requested housing. So I, you know, I, with regard to the character of the community, I, I think that this project, although of greater intensity and height than what's been seen in the past, is a well-designed project and will be executed in a manner that will minimize impacts during construction, which is, I think, you know, primary focus of the conditions of approval that we'll be looking at. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any further questions that commission might have.
Thank you. Did, did anybody have anything else that you would like a director to address at this time, any of the commissioners? No, one of the things I heard from one of our speakers is putting a pedestrian light. Is there something we can add here along those lines, or has that been brought up before?
So as we talked about previously, Woodside Road is Caltrans right-of-way and decisions about installation of signals, signs, et cetera, really rests with Caltrans. As the commission knows, we are, we do our best to work closely with TRAP Caltrans to try and promote better circulation, bicycle and pedestrian safety. And we will continue to do so, but we are unable to make an improvement on the state highway requirement of the project because we, we don't have jurisdiction to ensure that that will happen.
Okay. Thank, thank you for clarifying that. Okay. So at, at this time, I'll open it to the commissioners for any comments, deliberations. Commissioner Ramirez, you want to?
Yes, yeah, thank you. You know, while I am not too crazy about this proposed project with the, with a fourth story on it, I realized that basically we don't have jurisdiction over that, as it is superseded now by the state law. So we previously approved a three-story. And now they've applied for the density bonus, which now puts it in the hands of the state, and there's not much we can do for that. I think Sir Fox at some point can chime in, but that's my take for this project. Therefore, I will support it based on the fact that we have previously and the supervisors have already approved it. So that's, that's my take for this.
Let me, Hanson?
Yeah, I definitely think the project is way too big for the neighborhood. And it doesn't step into the neighborhood, you know, you gotta have one-story house next to a four-story building. It's, it's, it's a massive transition. Given that though, just because I think or what I want isn't my job. My job is to see, did it meet all the criteria that the county has outlined, the state has outlined. And, you know, is it going where it was? And have we done all the reasonable things to get there? So we're definitely going where the state and the county wants us to go. And it's all within the legal means, and I have, cannot make any findings to deny it, whether I want to or not. So I can't, I'm gonna have, I will be voting to prove it unless someone could show me a way to have a finding for this. So it's, it's needed, it's wanted. I just wish we weren't always in a reactionary mode and lived up to our ideas of being a planning. Thank you.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Well, I have to agree with Mr. Ramirez and Hassan. As I read the staff report, it, it seemed clear that there wasn't any choice here, really. It's all state mandated. I think you know, and I agree with, okay, well, wait. It's basically, as you look at the designs and everything, it's a nice-looking building, taken out of context, the building is nice. I, I have no problem with it. But then you put it in the neighborhood and you think, oh, man. But that's not my neighborhood, how unfortunate. And I do look forward to a future study session. You know, and I, I also understand that the state is stepping in because of the extent of the problem and their proposals for how to fix it are pretty, I don't know how to say, broad or rough or I don't know, whatever. But these, this is the effect. And so, yes, I will indeed vote for it. Oh, one question. It said in the staff report that the planning commission should also say that no additional environmental review is required. Does that need to be part of the motion? Or is the motion just as proposed?
I saw a nod from council. I'll take that as it should be included as part of the motion.
Okay.
Is that part of the recommendation? There? No, okay. I didn't. Yeah, my fellow commissioners have said it all. Yeah, it's a much needed project. And of course, it's a nice-looking building. I think the applicant has done a good design for the building, but but yeah. I, I'm going to support it too. So let's go ahead with it. So do I have a motion?
I'll jump in. So I moved to approve the major subdivision. County file number PLN 2022-00136 by making the required findings and adopting conditions of approval and attachment A and also with recommending that no additional environmental review is required.
One second now.
Roll call. Jen?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Sarah McQuan is absent. And Chair Gupta?
Hi.
Thank you, your motion passes.
Congratulations. The project is approved. And so we move on to the next item on the agenda. Steve, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gupta. I do not have any correspondence to report. The correspondence we received were, was all related to the items that we've already discussed today. So moving on with regard to a study session for the next meeting. We don't currently have one. I am very supportive of the idea of a future study session regarding housing affordability and how we ensure that we make that happen. And so I will work with my staff to get that calendared, but unfortunately, we won't be able to do that as quick as next meeting. We do have one item currently scheduled for that meeting, and it's a non-conforming use permit for, in addition to a, an existing single-family dwelling in Emerald Lake Hills. Moving on to the director's report, I wanted to let the commission know that at the last board of supervisors meeting, they approved an affordable housing agreement with the Josuak Family Trust. That project came before the planning commission and included an affordable unit. And so here's an example of the way in which we enforce affordability requirements. In that case, it's, it's an agreement that's placed on the deed of that property. And I can bring more information about that when we do our study session, if you like. Upcoming board of supervisors meeting will include consideration of the childcare ordinance. As you may recall, you recently accepted or recommended acceptance of the modifications requested by the California Coastal Commission, and that will be before the board in March. And as I reported last time, we are working on a presentation of our long-range work program, which we'll bring to you in March as well. And so that concludes my update. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
None.
The.
Commissioner Ketchum?
I had heard that the long-range planning is gonna be on March 22nd. Is that fairly firm, or we're still just sort of in March?
No, I, I, March 22nd is still what we're planning for.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
What is the plan for March 22nd? I missed.
So you may recall Chair Gupta that every year towards, in the first quarter of the year, we present to the planning commission our long-range work program, and that includes all of the policy and regulation updates, all the you know, updates to our general plan elements and as well as a kind of update on our ongoing long-range planning work that we do. So we will be presenting that to you at the March 22nd meeting.
March 22nd. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Ketchum?
No, thank you.
No? Okay. So at the next meeting, I would also like to know any details that we need to know about our in-person meeting for March? Like parking, any parking permits for the commissioners?
Yes, I believe Janice is working with our facility staff to make sure that you all have the permits you need and the spaces will be available. So that is underway.
I do. My old, but it's rotting, it's yeah, it's 12 years old, it's
or the.
My mirror.
We can use the same, the one we had before?
We have to have directions, because there's a huge changes over there and I get lost easy.
I'll be sending everybody a detailed description on where to park, what's, what location you have to go to. And I do have parking passes for all of you, and they are the brown ones, Commissioner Hanson. So I believe it's the same one. So just, maybe this afternoon, I'll go ahead and send that out to you.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. So I don't have anything else. Commissioner Ramirez, did you have anything?
No, nothing, thanks.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned.
All right, see you next time.
Next time.